Better do that first, huh? I'd like to call this meeting of the Fremont County Planning Commission to order, May 2nd, 2023. And if you would, let's see, we need a roll call first. And our chairman, Mark Mazur, is unable to be here today, and so I am chairing in his stead. But I am here. Mr. Brown is here. Mr. Mergelman is here. Mr. Payne is here. And Mr. Fay is here. And Mr. McCullough, here. So we are all here. If you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, I'd like to, we do have our agenda in front of us. I do have one item that we need to add under new business, and that is a report from Dan Victoria on the results of the last Board of County Commissioners meeting where they discussed items of concern to this planning commission. And so with that, I'm open to a motion.
I'll make a motion. We accept the agenda for May 2nd, 2023 as adjusted.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion?
Rudolph.
Yeah, your name?
Oh, yay.
Aye.
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 Thank you. The motion has passed. And then next on our agenda is the approval of minutes for the April 4th, 2023 Planning Commission. Any comments or changes to those minutes?
I move we approve the minutes from the April 4th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Aye.
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 Aye. We have approved the minutes. We have no unfinished business, and so under new business, Mr. Victoria, if you'd like to address this.
Okay. Hello, everyone. So just want to give you guys a brief update. At the last BOCC meeting, we had the two minor subdivisions that when it was in front of you, there was waivers for drainage. And this board had voted to approve the minor subdivisions with the drainage being done at the time of development. During the last BOCC meeting, after the time of the Planning Commission meeting until the BOCC meeting, they had me do research on the history of drainage waivers, kind of percentages of approval, and any issues that had come up. And that kind of revealed that there was inconsistencies within the department of drainage waivers that should have been deferred to the time of development, stuff not making it to the milers or the platnots. We just realized that it was creating a lot of inconsistencies. So with that knowledge, the BOCC made the decision to have both of those subdivisions have the drainage waiver, or the drainage contingent upon approval subdivision. They did not move to approve the waiver until time of development. So it is basically triggered after our meeting and some more research in-house. So for better housekeeping and more consistency among applications, they chose to not approve the waivers.
And I would, I would add to that. I was, although not able to be there in person to attend the meeting, I did, I was one of the millions of viewers on Facebook later, and the, the meeting was as Mr. Victoria has portrayed to us. And so I thought that was information that was interesting. Essentially, the Board of County Commissioners said, we think we've been inconsistent in the past in applying waivers, and it is not their intention, their stated intention going into the future to apply waivers for drainage plans. They felt that it was, that it was of enough importance and import to the process that they, they felt they needed to see, that not, not approve any more waivers for plans. Okay?
Is that a directive to us to not let any more go by?
Not at all. They, I mean, they, they're not telling anyone what to do. Applicants have the right to request waivers. It's just with more information that was discovered, that's how they, they chose to move forward. So it, this board can still make whatever decision they choose. It's just whether or not the BOCC views it as the same.
And I would say as, as individual board members, planning commission members, it's up to us to use our judgment and knowledge and hopefully wisdom in evaluating these requests that are put before us. We're certainly free to make our own decisions based on what is presented, and I hope that we can do that. But I felt that it was important to know what, how the commissioners are going to be looking at this. Any other discussion on that agenda item? Hearing none. Let's then go on to our next agenda item, which is Plan Tools presentation, I believe. And that's in your court again, I believe.
Well, I'd love to have it be fully in my court, but I'm going to defer to Martin and Todd here. We, the county had applied for a, for grant money to try and see how our regulations can, there can be an ease of use and ease of burden and how we can make more, make more decisions to, for affordability across various spectrums of housing and kind of see where some of our flaws are that are prohibiting people. So with that, I would defer to Martin, and he can explain it to you.
Sure. All right. Thanks, Dan.
Do you want to turn your light green there for us? Thank you.
All right. Okay. This will probably be the first of many opportunities I'll have to stand before you, I hope, and talk about this project. As Dan mentioned, I'm Martin Landers. I have a firm called Plan Tools. We're based in northern Colorado. Our firm specializes in the preparation of master plans, land development codes, special studies. And with me tonight is Todd Vanabloog, and he's with a firm called Eager Plus Ochs. He's a planner that works with us beyond a variety of different projects, including this one here. Now, we're also working with a firm called MDVR. They're a land use attorney based out of the Denver area, and I've had an opportunity to work with, with not only Eager Plus Ochs, but also MDVR on a number of projects over the years. I've been very fortunate myself to work around the state, primarily with smaller communities, rural counties, on a variety of different land planning issues. So I, it's a pleasure to be here today and to chat with you about this particular project, which is the Affordable Housing Audit and Zoning Code Revisions Project. Next slide, please. As Dan mentioned, the county received a grant from the Colorado Department of Local Affairs in 2022, and the whole idea of the grant was to take a look at the county's zoning regulations, master plan, subdivision regulations, any other kind of development policies, regulations in place to find out if there's barriers within those regulations to the development of, of housing, and in particular, affordable housing. So what is affordable housing? There was also a study down here in Fremont County called the Fremont County Housing Needs Assessment. This was done in 2019, and I think he might have gotten a grant to do that, too. But in any event, in that study, there's a definition for affordable housing that talks about housing that is affordable to a given household. Less than 30% of income is spent on housing costs. So whether it's, you know, the mortgage, the variety of different utilities and other things that are associated, if you're paying more than 30% of your income, it's not considered affordable. As a part of this Housing Needs Assessment, they determined that since 2012, the cost of housing has increased 75% in the county, while wages have only gone up 10% during that time. So you can see, it's been a pretty good disconnect. And as you, as you all know, there's, there's certainly some housing issues here in the county, and we've been hired to help figure out if, if any of the county's rules, processes, or programs are hindering or could be changed that maybe help facilitate new housing development within the county. We've got a, a project approach here, a schedule for the project. It's basically broken down into three phases. Policy diagnosis phases is what we're in right now, and we're reviewing a lot of different documents, including the Housing Needs Assessment, the zoning resolution, the subdivision regulations, the county's master plan. There was a moratorium passed regarding single wides. There's IGAs with Canyon City dealing with land use. There's a lot of different policy documents that we're reviewing. So that's what we're doing right now. We're taking a look at all that information and data. Our next step then is, is going to be what we call the code update phase, and we're going to be making some recommendations based on, on what we've reviewed for a variety of different types of policy changes, whether they be to the master plan and some of the strategies that are in there, or how to implement those strategies. And I'll talk about those in a few minutes. But basically come up with, with ways to refine your codes and policies to encourage more housing development. And then finally, the third phase of the project is regarding the implementation of all of that. And so we would essentially provide the resolutions and go through that process of adoption with the county at that point. The timeframe for the project is about a year and a half. We started December, January or so, by the time we really got going with this, this year. We're at the stage now, we're ready to transition to the code update piece, and then we're, we need to be done by April of 2024, because that's when the grant requires us to be completed by. So that's a little bit about the approach and schedule. I mentioned that there's several strategies right now in the county's master plan that was adopted back in 2015. So we're going through that, and I just threw up three different ones here that we'll take a look at and provide some recommendations for you to address those particular strategies. For example, the first one says to adopt regulations for manufactured home park developments to address functionality of the development compatibility with neighborhood uses. So again, we'll come up with some, some code language for you to take a look at and consider for that particular adopted Fremont County master plan strategy. Second one there has to do with considering innovative construction styles and techniques such as tiny homes and barn conversions. One of the things that we're doing as a part of this project is talking with, with different folks from the development community, former commissioners, current commissioners, people that are involved in the building industry, such as the Building Official, people from other jurisdictions, to kind of get a sense of their perspective on different things. And one of the ideas that was tossed out had to do with barn conversions just yesterday. So, and it's in your master plan. And so we'll, we'll come up with some policy and some guidance for that particular one as well. The other sample one we threw out here was to encourage multifamily housing developments to locate in urban areas of the county. And so as you know, you've got this kind of urban growth district in your master plan that's surrounding Canyon City. It's an incorporated area that's surrounding Canyon City. So again, we'll take a look at that map and talk about what types of things we could do to perhaps encourage multifamily housing in those areas. So that's just a flavor for the different types of things we're going to take a look at. There's more in the master plan besides this, just some samples to, to pull out and give you a sense of what we're going to be doing. In addition to the county's master plan, you've got Department of Local Affairs, and there was a bill passed called HB 211271 back in 2021 that came up with a, a number of potential strategies for communities to adopt, and they had 16 of them listed. And when the county filed its, its grant application to DOLA, and they actually got funding as a part of this HB 211271 grant program, through their planning grant program to do this project, the county identified, I think, seven different possible DOLA-related strategies that, that you may want to consider. And the first one here was allowing development in small square footage residential unit sizes. And this is one that the county identified is, is already accomplishing a portion of. Right now, you've got language in your code that allows for the development, I think, of, what is it, 400 square foot units? And this was a change that was made fairly recently, I understand. So in any event, that's the type of thing that Department of Local Affairs looks at when a county or local government goes to them and looks to get grant funding to do additional affordable housing development, or let's say you had a developer come into town that was wanting to do something, but they need some extra funding, you could apply for a grant. If you've got their strategies that you've adopted, or at least several of them, then you're, you're more competitive and able to get those grant funds to do that type of thing. Another one that the county threw out there was to authorize accessory dwelling units as a use by right on parcels in single-family zone districts. Currently, the county does have ADU regulations in place. Whether or not they're, you know, consistent with the language in DOLA or not is one of the things we're going to take a look at. One of the things that's important when you're developing these strategies and, and working on these regulatory fixes is to try to make them as, as effective as possible in being able to actually get that type of housing built. Currently in the county, I believe there are only eight ADUs that have been built. And so what can we do with the ADU regulations to remove any barriers that might be within those regulations, preventing people from actually building accessory dwelling units? One of which may be that the minimum lot size that you can do an ADU on currently is one acre. And so if you were to reduce the minimum lot size requirement for doing an ADU, that would open up more opportunity, obviously, for others to do ADU development. So that's the type of thing that we'll be looking at within the zoning resolution. The third sample strategy that the, the county threw out there as a part of their grant application was the creation of a program to subsidize or otherwise reduce local government review or fees, including building permit fees, planning waivers, other types of, of fees or approaches. And that's something that we've heard a lot of interest from just in our, our interviews with the development community, as well as feedback that we've received from the commissioners and others, that there is some ways that perhaps we can look at streamlining the development review process, making it easier for people to get through and to process their applications, which reduces the cost of development. So in any event, just want to throw those out there as, as some sample strategies that we'll be looking at. So what I'd like to do next is to invite my colleague Todd Vanabloog to come up and talk a little bit about some of the community engagement approach that we're using, and then I'll come back and wrap it up.
Great. Thank you, Martin. And thank you, commissioners, for your time today. So as Martin mentioned, we do have, we have started outreach activities to interface with different people in the community to get their thoughts on housing and development and regulate zoning regulations in the county. And we started that when the process started around January. And you can see here, this graphic kind of shows the different pieces of our outreach or our community engagement approach. I'm going to start at the top and go to the right, and then I'll kind of go circle back to the other side. So we do have a project website. It's actually linked to the county's website, so you're welcome to go visit it. It's basically a place where community members can go to learn more about the project, review existing documents, like the existing zoning code, and then whenever we have draft amendments that are ready for public review, we'll post that as well. And then kind of going down the right side, one thing that's linked on the project website is an interactive comment map. It's basically like a Google map that you can zoom in and out, and then you can place comments on. So if you want to zoom into a certain property or an intersection or a neighborhood and say, and post comments about housing or development in that particular part of town or part, part of a community or in the county, that's a great way to stay engaged and do it online. You could do it in the comfort of your own home. So that's something that, a feature that we really like. And moving on down, we actually have two open houses with a public plan for this process. The first one's actually going to be really soon. It's going to be in, on June. Right now, we're looking around June 5th. We haven't totally locked in that date, but it'll be sometime in June. And we'll, we'll post that more on the project website so that we can get the word out on that. And then that'll be a, a way for community members to come in and give us their take on what they, on their thoughts about housing and development around the county. And then media outreach at the bottom, right? So that's one way where we can continue to promote the project, process and project through the local radio station, the local newspapers. We have some PSAs and public and press releases, especially with the open house coming up in June. That's a great way for us to put out press releases, to start promoting that event to get people out. And then I'm going to move on to the left side of the, the graphic. If there's community events, especially with the summer coming up, that'd be a great way for us to maybe have a table to interface with community members that way. Stakeholder interviews, we actually started that in March. We spoke to a number of individuals, as Martin mentioned, and we even spoke to quite a few people yesterday as well to get different perspectives on housing and development. And then the final thing is flyers and exhibits. We have a traveling exhibit that we have here in the county building, and we also have in some of the municipalities as well. It's just a way to kind of get the word out, but in a very visual form. And next slide. And this is a map that's kind of a work in progress, but we're working with county staff, working with Dan and Danielle on identifying different housing options and opportunity sites throughout the county. Right now, the, the project is mostly focused on unincorporated areas, just everything in the county and outside of municipalities. But we're casting a broad net right now just to get a sense of what opportunities and sites there are, both in municipalities like Florence and Canyon City and so on, but also outside in the county. And then when, once we get a, a full picture of what's, what's existing, then we can start figuring out where some gaps are and where opportunities may lie. And then we'll probably present a variation of this map at the public open house in June, so that way people can start giving us feedback on that as well.
Just a quick, quick question. You said, as far as the website is concerned, is that, is that on the Fremont County website right now?
It's linked on the project. It's linked from Fremont County's website, but our team is managing the actual content of that.
Right. But to, to, but to get to it, you would go into Fremont County?
Correct. You can do that. Yes.
Yeah. If you go to the Fremont County homepage, there'll, there's a brief description and a link to click that will bring you to this website, and then you could see the interactive layer and, and read all about it.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Yeah, we just got that up a couple days ago, I think, so.
Yeah, it's pretty recent, so.
Yeah. So in terms of our next steps, we're, we're working to finish up the review of the codes, and then we're going to move forward with this open house event that Todd mentioned here in June, early June. And then we'll go and begin to recommend some specific code changes, and then come back to you and, and let you know what we've been doing. So with that, certainly like to open up to any questions or comments or thoughts that any of you might have.
Is this going on in all counties in the state or just Fremont County?
The state is working with a number of different communities and counties, municipalities as well as, as counties across the state through this HB 211271 Planning Grant Program. What they typically do is they marry it along with a Housing Needs Assessment. And so you do a Housing Needs Assessment, and then you, right away, you do what we're doing. Since you folks did your Housing Needs Assessment a couple, three years ago, 2019, I guess, it's just that other side of it, it's just now looking at the strategy. So we've already got the data side of it done from the Housing Needs Assessment, so now we're just completely focused on the strategy development. But yes, this is being done all over the state. There's quite a bit of funding available through the state's HB 211271 Planning Grant Program.
Well, the only question I have goes back to the 75% increase in materials and the 10% increase in salaries. Is there any way to, I would like to see like a pie chart, how much the actual dwelling costs, how much the land costs, how much the utilities, the water tap costs, and how much money the city costs to get into a dwelling? And that would show us exactly how much the city can do to help. So I think it's going to be, the cost of, of a home, the cost of the land right now is so out of proportion to everything else, it's, I wonder how much the city can actually affect that.
Well, again, this is, you said city, this is a county project.
A county, yeah.
But it's a good question. I, I don't know if the Housing Needs Assessment has the ability to break down the data quite that way.
A hundred thousand dollar house and a $400,000 house, basically are going to take the same cost from the city, aren't they? Or the county? Water tap, fees, all the stuff you have to do that?
Yeah, it depends on whether it's stick build or manufactured. In fact, we had this conversation yesterday.
Well, I heard manufactured homes are like two years, a year, two years out, and it's cost as much as a stick build home.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Good question. I, I don't have the answer for you.
I know. I just, that's what I keep thinking, you know? Want to hear what all this stuff's cost. I just don't know how much the county can do to affect that.
Well, we're not going to be able to affect the cost so much of, you know, what costs, you know, for, you know, a piece of lumber, obviously.
Right.
But what we can do is make the process easier for applicants to get through, and there's costs associated with that. Time is money for the applicants as they go through the process, or even being able to do such things as opening up the ability to do, say, ADUs on land that's less than one acre in size, providing more opportunities for certain types of housing to be built is what the county can do through its regulatory side of things. So our side of the coin here is really dealing with what can, what can the county government do within its regulations and policies to make it easier? And certainly, there's a lot of things that we can't do, associate with some of the costs. We can't do anything about interest rates, for example. I mean, that's been a big cost that's gone up in the last year. That's really affected everybody. But what we can do is we can work on those policies and regulations to try to, to make it as easier, easier than what it is right now anyways.
The, go ahead, Travis.
Oh, I was just going to kind of go back to the whole waiver thing when we're going through the code audit. If we can go through, you know, the most commonly requested waivers over the past handful of years and, and see if, if we could address those via policy rather than, you know, kind of continuously getting these same waivers over and over, if that could, this is a good opportunity to address, you know, some of those.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah.
So we'll do that. We'll work on, pull that from.
Drainage being one, because I mean, again, going back to the drainage thing, you know, we've heard the case made that it, it would be a much lower cost to be taken care of at time of build rather than at time of planning. So, you know, is that a better time to address that rather than having a waiver every time?
Certainly.
Just a different policy.
Yeah, usually when you're getting a lot of waivers or variances or needs to change one particular thing, that means your code really isn't working right in that particular area.
Yeah, we do see a ton of, you know, paving, parking lots, buffers, landscaping, drainage. We see a ton of those.
Okay. Good. Thank you for that. That's helpful.
And to kind of build on Rudolph Councilman Mergelman's discussion and recognize that he is, he is a city councilman, so he does, he does kind of look at things from the city perspective. But, but, you know, Canyon City went through a similar process, and what the council members' continuous mantra to the, to the firm that, that they used to look at their codes, building codes and zoning regulations, was that the process needs to be simple, well-defined, and with a, with a guaranteed outcome if you check all the boxes. And if you can achieve a code that, that does that in a reasonable time, because you can, you can obviously, you know, move out the, the process sometimes. can, you can obviously, you know, move out the, the process sometimes with, with studies and, and things like that, that, that may or not, may or may not be germane to a particular, you know, request. But, but that was, that was, the Canyon City request is to make it simple, make it with a known outcome in a, in a reasonable timeframe. There's another, another observation, you know, my wife and I have a recreational vehicle. We do a lot of traveling during the summers. And what we're seeing in multiple jurisdictions, in multiple states, is that trailer, trailer park, RV trailer parks are dedicating more and more of their spaces to monthly rentals rather than daily rentals. And they're going to, you know, they're installing power meters so that they can bill the, the customer directly for the power used by that particular site. And there, there was, you know, that, some of them are going 100% that way, where they are no longer in a, in a nightly rental situation. The other comment I would have is that, is that in a way, the, this, because of the way grants are funded and awarded and things like that, this kind of puts blinders on you, or blinkers on you, where your, where your vision is restricted. Because there's, there's another way that you increase housing costs, and that's by increasing regulatory burdens. Now, that's not within your scope, but I would like to note that when we have people in Denver that continually move to increase the cost of housing via electrification requirements, via solarization requirements, all those things add to cost. And so in a way, we're, we're not, some of the root cause, that if we did a root cause chart on, or study on, you know, what is, what are the root causes of increased housing costs that we're seeing, one of the answers to that, I'm sure, would be regulatory burden from states and the federal government. And that's, and that's through different, different means, but that's, that's my comment. Any other comments from the... Well, thank you for the presentation. We do appreciate it, and we look forward to hearing from you in the future, and that we, we would, I know myself personally, would really like to see where the county and the municipalities within the county can help our citizens achieve affordable housing.
Can I just do one more? Sorry, I just, I had one more, I forgot. When we get those, like, community events, the open house dates and stuff like that, could we, could we get those in an email or something like that?
Absolutely.
I know we can go look and stuff, but I know it'd be good for us to be there and...
We will absolutely let you know as soon as...
Hear the input as well.
Yeah, once we get that buttoned up, we'll send it out to everyone.
Awesome. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next up on our agenda is 23-001 Yoder Storage Sheds, requesting approval for a zone change and final development plan. That will change the zoning from agricultural rural to industrial. The consultant is Matt Koch, Cornerstone Land Surveying, and lo and behold.
Hello. We are requesting a zone change. This is from ag rural to industrial zone. This is in Penrose. It's on K Street and Highway 50, right at the corner, the northwest corner. Right across the street to the east is the permanent yard sale. To give you an idea where this is at, it's that long building that has pretty much anything you would ever want out in front of it. So that's, that's where this is at. The property is vacant at this time. The proposal is for a 100-foot by 70-foot metal building. The plan is for a storage unit construction. They will build onsite and then set them out front for, so that you can see them, kind of a display area. This is on Penrose Water. It will have a septic system. We have gone through all the drainage. We have approval from the county engineer for the drainage plan. I hate to ask this, but we are requesting waivers of buffering, landscaping, and hard surfacing. There will be a handicap spot that will be hard surfaced, that will meet code. Other than that, if you have any questions.
The, perhaps we could hear from the staff on this? And if we had, that might prompt a few questions.
All right. Hello, everyone. So in front of us, we have a Zone Change Two with a final designation. Application number's 23-001 Yoder Storage Sheds. Applicant's name is Cliff Yoder, with Matt Koch as the consultant. As Matt said, requesting approval for a Zone Change Two with final development plan that will change the zoning from agricultural rural to industrial. Development includes a 100 by 70 building to accommodate the construction of storage sheds and sale, and sale of sheds. The lot size is 4.51 acres. The subject property is located in Agricultural Rural Zone District on K Street and Highway 50 in Penrose. The lot size meets the requirements of that zone district. Adjoining properties to the north, we have agricultural rural. To the south, we have industrial. The east is ag rural and business, and to the west, we have agricultural rural. Improvements: applicant requests permitting to construct a 100 by 70 building to use for constructing storage sheds. The applicant will place finished storage sheds along the south boundary for sales and storage purposes. The applicant has requested a waiver for landscaping, buffering, and screening. Let's see here, the Fremont County Building Department stated that the site appears to be able to accommodate no WTS system. The Penrose Water District has approved a commercial business tab. CDOT had submitted comments that requested no direct access will be allowed to US Highway 50 from Lot 2. Miller loader, Miller-Yoder Lot Line Adjustment. Access shall be granted, or gained, from the local road, K Street. The Planning and Zoning Department recommends approval for this Zone Change Two with a final designation, as surrounding lots in this area are a mix of business, industrial, and agricultural rural. The proposed hours of operation are typical business hours, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So the department recommends approval of this project, and in the application, the applicant, as part of their lands, or part of their landscaping and weed control, is they, they're going to have equipment onsite to maintain the lot. So we see no issues why their waiver should be granted, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, discussion from the panel?
Is this a new business, or just moving from another site?
They're just moving from down the road. They're at the old, can't remember the name of it, but it's, it's where the antenna is as you're going towards Pueblo on Highway 50. That's their site now, and so they're going to be moving from there over to this site. They've been renting that for quite a while.
They're, they're right next to Floyd's RV Park.
Yep.
Okay. Where the old Handimark.
Yep.
Right next to it. Okay.
The, I, I did have a question. Do you know, did the, did the applicant and their previous location or current location, did there, were, are there any landscape buffering and screening issues with, with that, or were there mitigation measures in place?
I don't believe so. I think that it's open along a lot of the north side. I know that there is a house that was part of the property one time, and there was a fence around that. I think more to separate it than to buffer it. But there weren't any other requirements when we did that commercial development plan for that. I think we got those waived as well, so.
Thank you. Okay.
So they're actually going to be building the sheds at the new location, this, this location?
They could, they'll be building on this location.
Entire operation from, okay.
Right, they've been renting that location where they're at now. So they'll move all, their whole business and everything over to this site.
Thank you. Other comments, questions?
You know, what's the, what's the existing use on this property?
It's vacant.
It's not agriculture? I mean, it's not...
It's zoned agriculture, but they haven't used it for ag. They've maybe had some horses on it over the years, but it's just weeds and...
Not irrigated or anything?
No.
One of the comments was identifying a 50,000-gallon cistern for fire protection. Did that make it on the site plan?
So that was changed. The fire department re-reviewed that, and they're changing that through the building permit process. We don't need to put the cistern in or anything like that. There's going to be an electronic fire call system that ties them to the fire department. And so the cistern went away through a re, a revision, so.
I, thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions or comments, I'm open to a motion.
Make a motion to approve ZC 23-001 Yoder Storage Sheds.
And...
Oh, with the waivers.
With the waivers. Thank you.
I'll accept it.
We have a motion.
Second, though.
And second?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Councilman Burgelman?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Thank you.
And it is approved. Next on our agenda, we have MS 23-002 JNS Hall Minor Subdivision, requesting approval for minor subdivision that will create a total of two lots. And George Hall, you're representing the, you're the consultant representing the applicant, is that correct?
Uh, yes, no relation. I'll let you know that right up the front. This is a minor, pretty typical minor subdivision in Penrose. I feel like we kind of got caught in a quandary, so to speak, that it's been historically for the last three or four years. We have asked for waivers for drainage plans to be diverted to the building permit time. We're kind of caught up in this argument and everything. It'd be my point that indirectly, with how we have been waiving them over the last several years, it indirectly changed that regulation, and I just wanted to bring that up to you. Other than that, I, yeah, open to answer any questions you may have.
And before we get to questions, let's hear the staff report, please.
All right. So here we have MS 23-002 JNS Hall Minor Subdivision. Applicant is Jason and Stacy Hall, consultant, Crown Point Land Services. This is, this request is for a two-lot minor subdivision. Lot number one will be point, or 4.77 acres. Lot two will be 4.77 acres. The subject property is located in the Agricultural Rural Zone District located at 569 East Street in Penrose. Both of these lots will meet development requirements for that zone district. For improvements, Lot 2 has a dwelling and two outbuildings. Applicants waiver requests are for a drainage plan, individual wastewater treatment system report, and a detailed utility plan. Fremont County Engineer comments, waiver request not recommended. Fremont County Department of Transportation, driveway access permits will be required at the time of building. Penrose Water District, Lot 1 has an approved water contract and appears to have a tap. Lot 2 already has service. Let me see here, the Fremont County Building Department, this department's had the opportunity to review the application for MS 23-002. After my review of the submitted documents, the engineer's soil analysis references two bore holes were drilled in the northwest corner on the property. Because of the refusal encountered at two to three feet, these test holes revealed it is going to be difficult to install a normal OWTS system. Although, although it is not required to dig profile holes on the property, it might be beneficial to determine the best possible location for the OWTS system prior to determining a location for a new dwelling. Planning and zoning department recommendations. The planning and zoning department recommends approval of this minor subdivision, with the drainage plan being a contingency item prior to recording. The department would also ask the address issuance and driveway access be a condition of approval at the time of development. So, and just to further clarify, some of the, for the last year, during the department's transition period with, with staff, many waivers were approved. Before that, with one of our planning directors, who was here for a few years, we had about a 50% approval rate at, at that time. So for the last year, things were, were very different than how they were consistently before that. So the department is navigating its way through that, and we're, we're sorting out the waivers and its need. But as far as this minor subdivision is concerned, we recommend approval with the drainage plan being a contingency, and that address issuance and access at time of development.
The, if I understand correctly, you're saying the drainage plan and report would be a requirement for approval?
Yes. We can, uh, the approval of the subdivision would be contingent upon a drainage plan being submitted and approved. And then the address issuance and access would be at the time of development.
Okay, questions from the panel? I, I do have a question. Is there an existing house on the property now?
Yes, there is one dwelling on property at this point in time. I believe it's on Lot 2, isn't it?
Lot 2, yes.
Yeah, I believe it's Lot 2. Part of my deal is, is we don't even know what the size of the house is going to be. We don't know how long the driveway is going to be. And so therefore, to me, depending on the length of the driveway, depending on the size of the house, that modifies your drainage plan. And that's, that's my big argument about it. We can do something on vacant land, but that don't necessarily mean that it's going to take consideration the length of a driveway, or the size of a dwelling, and that could really change your numbers when you're doing drainage plans.
I agree. Other comments? The, I note that there's also a detailed utility plan waiver request, is that correct?
Yes, sir, there is. So typically with a utility plan, if this was going to be multiple lots, that would be something that the department would be less likely to want to waive. But since this one lot is already built out, and we're talking about a single, one single family home coming in, having them provide a detailed utility plan to service one home, we're comfortable with allowing that to be waived.
So does Lot 1... Does Lot 1 have property furnished to all those utilities, or would some of those utilities have to go through Lot 2?
No, is it all, is it all come off of the street?
It all come off of the furniture?
Yes.
And then when, when drainage is considered, when it's a part of the building process, would that be... Is it better to consider the, the drainage as the whole lot right now, or like when it's done through Lot 1? I mean, would it still be considered how the drainage would affect Lot 2, is what I'm trying to spit out?
There's a couple different ways to look at it. George is absolutely right. If we knew every structure and all of the design of what the lot would be, the drainage plan will absolutely be more accurate. We were running into numerous inconsistencies. It, it's led to consultants having a hard time on knowing what to request and what not to. Right now, the, the department's stance is if we can require the waivers upfront, we have a better idea of what's going on with what we're allowing to be created, and, and we can try and troubleshoot what may be occurring. There's two different ways to look at it. We're, we're trying to look at it as an overall, and make sure that nothing slips past, whereas the applicants can do a more detailed study at the time of development. So it's, right now, our view as the pro would be to handle it upfront. But I, I understand the applicant's rec, or request as well. But I, I understand the applicant's, um, re- or request as well.
But how, how can you do it before the fact? You know, you don't know what's going there, where the drive is going, what the elevation to the new building is going to be. How can you go ahead and say, well, right now, this is what we require, but it may change once the building goes in?
And, and the, the buildings that would go in could affect it. I mean, um.
Absolutely.
The, the average, the average sized home is very different, dependent on who is building it. Whether or not they're going to have outbuildings, I mean, there, there are numerous things. The, the lot coverage that's allowed in the various zone districts, how many, how much structures and, and previous surface you're going to have. Those are all unknowns at this time. We were just running into a situation where if it was making the milars, it's being missed on reviews. Was it missed on the milars because there's no communication? Our researches show that there's a lot of stuff that was requested that ultimately got missed in one way or the other. And now we have lots being built with no drainage done on them at all. So we have a bunch of, um, a bunch of things that have occurred that we can't get back.
What you're saying is that in essence, they're going to have to do the drainage plan now and then do another drainage plan once the building goes in.
Uh, so we wouldn't require a second drainage plan at the time of construction. With them doing a drainage plan now, uh, it would cover the lot and there would be an idea of what's occurring there. When somebody comes in to pull a home permit, the building department only checks to see the immediate area around the home and make sure that it's going to drain away from the home, but it wouldn't necessarily initiate a second drainage plan to be triggered. The drainage plan's already been done on the property. So there, there wouldn't be that requirement for a second drainage plan down the road at permitting.
It appears to me that the problem is that the communication is not happening on our end.
To a certain degree, yes, absolutely. You know, and, and like I said, uh, in the last year, when waivers were requested, waivers were, were granted with, or were, were recommended to be waived. Prior to that, when we had Director Garrett, there was a fifty percent waiver ratio.
Was there any trigger that let you know that it needed to have the drainage plan done at time of development?
So, um, there are, what we realized in the last year, a couple of the milars were actually recorded without the language being put on them. So, um, one, a building permit is applied for. The building permit comes down to us for our staff review, we'll pull the, the platmat. If the notes don't make it to the map, it, it just misses.
Understand, who's responsible putting the notes on the milar?
The problem with various staff changeover is there wasn't clear communication.
Okay, and I understand that happening also.
Yep, so there, um, it, it did highlight some errors that were occurring within the department. And, um, you know, they, but prior to that, the standard was going back through Director Garrett and even the, the last year of Director Koch. It was about a fifty percent ratio of approvals versus requiring them. So, um, the one thing I did not break down during those numbers was how many of those were business lots or commercial development plans? Because if you're doing a subdivision in a business zone, we wouldn't require a drainage report then because the size of the business or that would be going in can, can vary drastically. So during a commercial development plan or a SRU process, that's when we would request a detailed drainage plan for businesses. But as a whole, for the residential lots, it's, it's been about fifty percent if you go back all the way to twenty eighteen.
So the, um, to me, it, there's, there's actually two different problems here. Number one, if you do a drainage study, that's contingent on the, that's, that looks at the existing conditions of a piece of property. It tells you the things that you find out by doing a study are the amount of rainfall, runoff coefficients, slopes, the existing topography, soil types, things like that. That's a study, and that's irrespective of what, whatever may be there. When we're talking about a plan, that, that kind of moves it into a, a different category. And Mr. Victoria, if you would, can you give us the idea of the, kind of where the bookends are on what a plan might require? That'd be, because what, essentially what you're doing, when, when you, when you're dealing with drainage in a, in a setting, you're trying to make sure that, that if there are requirements, for instance, for rights of way dedications for drainage channels or drainage ponds, that those exist so that, so that, that when you build a house, you don't build it in the middle of the pond, essentially. That's, that's the planning part of it. But what are the bookends on, on that? When you're talking about the, and I'm talking about the actions that a drainage plan might drive.
All right, so with the drainage plan, I mean, the, the main goal of the drainage plan is to make whatever occurs on the lot to not increase the amount of runoff that will be leaving that lot.
And that's a statutory requirement?
Yes, sir. So, um, so basically, when, when we're requesting the drainage plan, the topographic report, on one hand, can, it's going to show which way the flow will go on it. But the drainage plan dives in deeper, the drainage plan involves the topographic. It shows where the waterways are going to be, where there are going to be potential issues, and if there's any need for intervention of sorts to, to lessen the amount of water coming off. It, it's one of those things where our regulations have, this has been a, an item in our regulations since we've had them. This isn't something new. It's, um, it's how the various directors feel about them and how they move forward with them, and they present them to the various boards for you guys to make recommendations on or decisions. I think it's important, and I think it's, it, it's caused errors, and there's, there has been inconsistencies in the past with them. So I understand it being a contentious topic with the applicants and, and needing more discussion.
Can I, can I just, listening to yous and everything? I know it's not my position or anything else, but could we potentially modify the name? And we have a drainage plan, and we have a drainage study. And a drainage plan would be more detailed to where you know what buildings and whatnot is going on. A drainage study could potentially just see, this is what the existing conditions are now.
That's absolutely something I'm receptive to, and we could look into that and try and move forward.
I'm just throwing a thought pattern, guys.
Yeah, um, so part of the thing that I've been trying to do since I've been back is I, I'll sit there and talk with the consultants and find out how they feel that things can be more useful, where some of the flaws are. I've talked to George about our applications, I've, um, so I have been receptive to feedback and stuff like that. So if, um, this is absolutely something that we can look into, and if this is enough to suffice what we need, then we could propose a regulation change. But without, without doing a study into it, I wouldn't know.
It was more something that just popped in my head.
To me, that makes a lot of sense, it really does.
Yeah, me too.
If we can get the information needed, you know, for, for one, and then get the final one, to me, sounds a good way to go, I don't know. There, there are some inefficiencies that way. It's, it's not the, the most economic way to do it. Generally, when you want, when you hire a consultant, you want them to, to do the whole, the whole thing at once instead of having a couple of mobilizations or whatever.
Are you making these assumptions that could be totally making an ass of both you and me?
Uh, the, the, but, but a, a study does document the site conditions and is the basis for creating a plan. It is a, a necessary first step to creating a plan.
It, it is, and the reason why I don't like waiving them, I like to have more facts than less facts when we're, we're working on projects. I don't like to assume, uh, in the past, when I did zoning elsewhere, there was something on paper that worked really great, and it was a disaster when it came to drainage, and it caused a bunch of issues for people down slope.
Would, would a study have, uh, you know, helped deal with that?
So in this particular instance, um, the study didn't take something as a factor.
Oh.
So this was back when I lived in the northeast, and there, there is a perfect, um, design system, but it didn't factor in the fall when the leaves fell off the trees. And when it clogged the system and, and directed the water, it caused catastrophic damage for people down, downhill.
Sure.
Um, and after that, the subdivision was already built out and everyone had left, you know? So it, um, I've seen when it can go bad, and on paper, the study worked as long as there, you kept everything clean. But I, I don't like to guess, and, and I like facts, and that's why I'm kind of a stickler for not wanting to waive or defer until time of development. It's, that's just my stance.
So if a study existed, would that study aid a property owner in selecting locations for different structures?
It, it would absolutely be beneficial in the development of the land. You know, anyone could look at a lot and kind of see where there's topography and, and take a guess at where a structure might be good or might not. But a, a drainage study or drainage plan would absolutely show you the good and bad of the lot.
Sure. Okay. Other questions, comments?
Can I put you on the spot, Alex? Since we're having a general conversation more than kind of a site-specific one? You can bill the county. Yeah, so if somebody were to come to you and say, hey, I want a study, not a plan, would you know what they were talking about?
No, I always go specifically to whatever the municipalities' regs are and say, okay, what do they require? Generally, they're similar for a municipality, but the municipality will have their differences.
Sure, so if we were going to make a distinction between a study and a plan, we as the county would have to really list out what, what those distinctions are, so you would know what to operate off of.
Absolutely. One thing to consider as well is if you're talking about doing a study, then maybe they're wrong. Rainfall changes, the way hydrology is done changes. So, you know, like we're doing a little bit of subdivision now of Florence right now. We're having to go back to a study that was done twenty years ago. Hydrology's done totally differently nowadays, and rainfall's actually changing significantly, so we're having to kind of redo other things.
Appreciate it, sorry about that.
No worries.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Two beers.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, I just wanted to get.
Any other questions or comments? So I'm open to a motion.
I guess another question, so I mean, do you feel if we made the waiver that based on how well the, the operation is running nowadays, that, you know, those inconsistencies, inconsistencies of the past would be addressed? I mean, that that communication would happen, that the, you know, the comments would make it on the milars and those milars would be looked at, and then, you know, what, what we're asking for at the time of, of building, that the drainage plan would be done?
So clearly, as a department head, my hope is to not have any errors occurring in.
Yeah.
Amongst my people.
Yeah.
I, we were able to identify where, where hiccups were occurring, and, and so we know how to make sure that that's not going to or should not occur moving forward. So I, I don't anticipate there being errors moving forward with staff or anything occurring, but, um, yeah. I, I think we're going to have it addressed.
Any further comments or, or questions? Then I will again suggest I'm ready for a motion. Well, with my current thinking, I will make a motion to approve, um, JNS Hall MS twenty-three dash zero zero two with the drainage waiver, trusting that the department will pick it up at the time of building. Uh, and I still believe that's the best time to do it. What else is there? And waiver of the utility plan.
I'd second that.
And that includes a waiver of the onsite, onsite water treatment?
Yes.
System, is that correct? We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? You want to start us off?
Aye.
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 Congratulations. On our next agenda item, Mystery Subdivision Filing two twenty-two dash oh oh one. This is a, a more complex, um, issue that we're going to be addressing, and so we're going to change up the order a little bit. We're going to hear from staff first at the request of staff and the applicant, and the applicant second. So Dan, if you'd like to take us through this.
All right, gentlemen, um, this is going to be a little different than, than what we did. So this, uh, two million, uh, applications came in to, uh, two million to come prior to, uh, my turn. Uh, so they have an outside consultant reviewing it, and one thing that they decided that outside consultant, that somebody helping with mixed things, continues, um, some stuff to finish this back up. So I have a, uh, staff report. I've been working, uh, years on this project, working on that report. So I have a staff report here that I'm going to leave. It's pretty extensive, so there are things. And then, um, the applicant will be able to present her application. Um, so what we have in front of us is General Plan zero zero one, Mystery Subdivision I two. My act is Margaret, you're in mystery, we get today's mystery. You're the guy that's four forty-five, third street, and ten minutes. This is called, and this doctor, and so down to me, and by, and so often, and so fast. The site address is empty, four five, third street, and ten minutes. The nature of the class, young, three million, three, they're accepted by thirty-three, three, six, five, eight, seven, 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 eight, nine, ten, eleven. Two, dedicated to twenty-five foot, ladies, dedicated to three, nine, ten, four, the roadway. Three, labor from subdivision design, and this, and this, one B, um, which suggests a lot standard and twenty-seven, public streets. Um, to exempt, lot three, four, from the requirements different on the public streets. And number four, labor development of modular way, and standards. This only is agricultural, right? So if I, yeah, 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 this is thirty-three, and so it is.
Performance of the Fremont County District. Performance with Design Standards. The proposed preliminary plan has been reviewed by county staff for consistency with the county's design standards set forth in Appendix One of the subdivision regulations as follows. Lot standards. The proposed lot configuration is in general performance with lot standards with the exception of the power. Front on Public Street. The subdivision property is dated with the exception of the existing single family dwelling and associated accessory buildings in use as on the proposed lot two. The first preliminary plan submitted in the lot configuration was seven substantially substantial blocks with four blocks that had frontage on L Street and modular modular doorway located off of L Street. The Department of Transportation Director informed the applicant that L Street would be required to draw up a new standard as designated for a local road from Third Street to Second Street. Several iterations of the lot configuration have been proposed throughout the development review process. The March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three lease of metal proposes lots that would have access access limited to Third Street with lot three having access to Third Street directly. Lots four through seven and possibly lot one with access to Third Street from a gated and private roadway called Motherway. The applicant stated that no lots have access on the L Street. This is an this is an indication A on the preliminary plan and the applicant has stated there will be a due restriction for lot three. Third subdivision design standards Appendix One D four. All residential lots and subdivisions shall sell from on Public Street. Additionally, Appendix One B A requires each lot to have access to a public dedicated street in a continuous integrated network of county roads. Assets the applicant has requested greater from the subdivision design standards, to exempt lots three and four from the requirement defined on Public Street in which phase is L Street. No waiver is ever requested to exempt lots from the requirement that each lot shall have access to a public dedicated street in a continuous integrated network of county roads. While the current configuration of modular doorway was set forth to avoid the cost of requiring improvements along L Street. Access should be permitted along L Street. Thus, planning and zoning staff continue to recommend the buildout of L Street becoming standard. The waterway for L Street was dedicated for the future buildout of the road when the mystery subdivision was approved in nineteen ninety-seven. It is understandable this this was not required to be built out because of identity, two lots, it did not warrant at that time. Staff finds the public waterway exists for L Street providing the owner with the ability to consider the lots. There are lot fundage along public roadsways in compliance with the subdivision design standards. Additionally, the Department of Transportation does not support the lot fundage waiver in adjacent roadsways that have the potential as an access to any of the lots that need to be drawn up to county standards. The criteria for driveway access permits are that the access needs to connect to an existing road right away and or have an easement agreement across the property. Lot sets, Appendix One D ten, third property, the depth of lots designated in place is yet. The lot grade in the is the distance parallel to the front line measured between side lot lines and the front setback line per section one point five definitions of different in zoning legislation. In November eighth, twenty twenty-two, D C R staff requested a brief configuration of the lot area to demonstrate performance with a lot depth standard and provided rationale if performance is not possible. Typically, the rationale for deterioration from lot depth requirements stems from exceptional critical condition of flood flooding incumbents. Considering the size of the property and the fact that no exceptional type condition exists, the criteria of lots could be designed uh to no greater than twice their width. The applicant rejected by any rationale but indicated that in the case of legacy lots, the width can be established at any point along the underside such that the standard is met. Planning and zoning staff has not been able to review anyone's subdivision legislation where that alternative establishment of the lot grade is defined. Typically, rationale for deterioration from lot depth requirements stems from steep topology or to preserve natural vegetation. No lots in performance with the lot depth standard except lot one is noted in the table before. And in that table, you see lot two, three, four, five, six, and seven. Um they detail in the performance column of how many feet the yardage is done. Um, that's a standard. The subdivision property is bonded by L Street on the west, Third Street to the south, in a twenty-five foot radiusment dedicated to Fremont County for roadway along the northern boundary of the property. L Street is designated a local driveway roadway with a fifty-foot non-maintained right of way. Third Street is also a local roadway with a fifty-foot right of way and has asphalt paving. The twenty-five foot radiusment, Second Street, is underdeveloped and unmaintained. The Department of Transportation indicated that there are three access permits on file for the subdivision that access from Third Street. If the subdivision is granted approval, access permits for modular doorway for lots four, five, six, and seven will be submitted along with the fees for each lot. Appendix One C one of the design standards. All lots created by the subdivision shall have a lot fundage along the public roadway unless exempted by conditions set forth in the design criteria for private ways. The entire western boundary of the subdivision property is bonded by L Street, which is a project roadway. The county accessing this is required in the street improvements, where in Appendix One C three states, any lots which are created by subdivision which have access from a previously patented right of way or proposed patented right of way shall be required to have width, have a roadway located in such right of way built to facilitate transportation unless access to be gained from an existing county maintained roadway. The construction required shall be along the entire frontage from which the property is accessed. The applicant proposes to have all lots access either on Third Street or modular doorway and no improvements to L Street and has requested a waiver from lot length requirements. Modular doorway is proposed as a fifty-foot wide cul-de-sac to be constructed to the standard of a common gravel road and would be a private and gated road with maintenance and access according to the mystery subdivision requirement number two, access easement and severance. Modular doorway serves a fifty-foot wide private access utility emergency easement while the access easement and severance states that modular doorway would be maintained and maintained by the lot owners given the subdivision. And if it's. The fire district has accepted the roadway construction and maintenance of modular doorway. Lot three with access to Third Street directly, lot one with access to Third Street directly, lots four through seven and possibly lot one with access to Third Street from modular doorway. The applicant proposes to limit access to L Street from any lot within the first subdivision via preliminary plan note A, which states no access is permitted from L Street to any lot in the subdivision. The applicant also indicated that there will be a due restriction for lot three. The fire district has accepted the property access denied from L Street. Through the development review process, planning and zoning, the Department of Transportation and the fire district have raised concerns with the impact of not constructing L Street becoming standard. The proposed standards to be generated from the subdivision along with the A I zoning of the remaining properties still having impact on the county roadway numbers. If L Street is not built out to county standards now, there is no other city available to the county to ensure that the street is constructed to serve not only this development, but residential visitors to the area and provide sufficient emergency response to a level of service required. The result would be that L Street emanating its own state and if one surrounding property is developed as four-point wide, it could lock that alive by the A I zoning. The county won't care the possibility of L Street becoming standard. As such, county staff continues to not support the lot fundage waiver request. Street design standards. The only new constructed roadway within the proposed subdivision is the modular doorway cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac is six hundred and thirty-seven point sixty-three point one in performance with the maximum one point seven hundred fifty-three in roadway areas and has a radius of right of way that exceeds fifty-three. The fire district and Department of Transportation have related to some of how modular doorway private drivers are deeper product incorporated third regulation model that services lot two. The fire district noted that the crossing would need to have support the weight of the district's emergency vehicles, thirty-seven and half tons, and the D O two director noted it would need to have adequate cover to support the vehicle traffic of modular doorway. The applicant provided an engineering drawing addressing the fire district's concerns about the irrigation state crossing. And the D O two director found the private driver had adequate cover to support the vehicle traffic on modular doorway. Other design standards. Appendix I H one, all streets shall be aligned to join the twenty-four existing streets. As referenced above, the property is bonded by dedicated county roads on the south and west in a twenty-five foot radiusment of roadway along the northern boundary. As such, L Street should be built out to county standards and the radiusment be maintained along the Second Street and be available for utility provision. Utilities. Public water will be supplied by an extended uh from the county's water district. The property owner's current residence is situated upon proposed lot two. Its proof of water is that it has service here and a salt water tap. The property's owner has been getting a lot of availability contracts with county water district for six additional taps to serve the additional lots under the conditions of the contract. The district has noted that the proposed subdivision requires considerable distribution system improvements to their existing system. The preliminary site development plan, smart design C C one, two shows the installation of a six-inch waterline on modular doorway to serve water to lots one and lots four through seven and also on Third Street and modular doorway to L Street to serve the fire hydrant at L and K. Since the proposal is to install a waterline in a private road, modular doorway, the district needed an easement agreement for the waterline installation and needed as well as to protect their district's ability to maintain and overcare the waterline. The applicant's staff presented a concept agreement within the legislation on which was negotiated with the district. The district board approved the easement at the table date in twenty twenty-three meeting. However, that easement is improperly executed, recorded, and provided to the district staff. And provided to the district staff recommends that easement be properly executed and recorded by this middle defined at that. They recommended that contingency is provided for the maintenance consideration. The water resource engineer with the division water resources would be the water supply management department. Proposed water supply for residential use can be provided without causing injury to decreased water rates and the supply is expected to be adequate. Division also noted that the applicant, applicant's asking for the irrigation water that is available can be discussed later. To the property being an open ditch called the alley ditch. It is not clear if or how this water will be used in the proposed subdivision. The division continues to require the review of information about how the owner is proposing to use the division part of the water. Specifically, there is baby study says between individual lots, a low level C D says in decreasing the irrigation area. As such, the division referred the applicant to previous comment letter dated April seventh, twenty twenty-two to be addressed. Staff recommends the applicant address to division water resources comments from April seventh, twenty twenty-two comment letter. They recommend that contingency is provided for the maintenance consideration. U D P water is a Colorado neutral ditch company that provides irrigation water from U D P to the property in five hundred stockages and deadlines. E T W I provides irrigation water for the subject property to the developer via the E T W I stockholder. Irrigation water is delivered to the property being an open ditch that runs through the proposed lots towards irrigation hose, lots one, two, and three. Alley ditch is maintained by the property owner. E T W I owns a pre-existing easement for the irrigation water pipelines along L Street, Third Street, Y, located in the town right away. There is also a buried one in the case of apple valley and one across the subdivision from east to west within a thirty-four easement. Through the development review process, E T W I requires that all existing E T W I easements be shown on the preliminary plan and noted concerns about the buried irrigation pipe for apple valley due to a portion of the proposed modular doorway is prepared to be constructed over second day's run. The March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three lease of metal includes a revised preliminary plan to accurately detect said easements. Additionally, irrigation pipe protection detail to protect the apple valley line to E T W I is provided along the corner. The corner sets have been dedicated to E T W I's attorney to protect E T W I's easements and its ability to light the water to its stockages. E T W I C P can approve the preliminary plan revision via email on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. However, final table scheduled on the E T W I board agenda on April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. If approved, the C P N can have requested the irrigation pipe protection detail be included within the preliminary plan set. As such, if a minimum degree is provided for the maintenance consideration. The subdivision is given the forms for a traffic disaster. The fire district initially recommended that the fire hydrant locations must be spaced no further than five meters apart from the fire floor of seventeen hundred fifty pounds permanent, where some of the current stations in the lot in performance with an enormous amount of fire cleared up in the city. The preliminary site development plan proposes the installation of a fire hydrant at the end of modular doorway, like a set in one of the intersection of L Street and Third Street. Due to the spacious lots, the fire district felt the hydrant locations were adequate and very difficult for hydrants every five meters. Graceful location is proposed by on-site subject system. The existing home is on a prepared on the proposed lot two has two weeks' grace. The Fremont County Environmental Health Department reviewed the preliminary plan application and found that each lot being four and a half acres larger, the prepared subdivision lots could be able to accommodate the requirement of on-site accessibility. Finally, the law. The department recommends approval of the sanitation rating of the prepared subdivision. In terms of public utility reasons, the preliminary plan includes an recent statement that easements to public services include utilities as part of the on all interior lines along and plenty along the exterior subdivision boundary. The applicant is indicated that utility provided notices issued out in September twenty twenty-two. The utility notices need to be recent based on the most recent, submitted dated March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Minutes. The subdivision property is located within the lowest point street of water set, which is connected to the Hudson River. The property is outside of any estimate designated as a danger area. Because of the large size of the subdivision, number of lots and orientation of the driveway, the Fremont County engineer required this middle with damage control. As such, the applicant included a damage plan in the January twenty twenty-three lease of metal. Upon review, the county engineer has approved the damage plan. The county engineer also reviewed the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three lease of metal and had no further comments. Traffic generation. The labor rate impact analysis is utilized by county staff to ensure the traffic generated by the proposed use do not result in undue traffic congestion or traffic habits. The applicant submitted a labor rate impact analysis that estimated the average daily traffic degenerated at twenty trips per day. Through the development review process, the D O two director raised concerns that this would be a very minimal amount this would be a very minimum amount that would be generated from the subdivision and that the number could possibly be two to two and a half tons higher. The applicant submitted a revised roadway impact analysis on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three that was signed and sealed by Jeff Hodgson, Phil Hodgson of L S C Transportation Consultants Incorporated, when the estimated average daily traffic degenerated by subdivision is sixty-six trips per day. The D O two director found that the increased number of trips per day would watch a more accurate traffic count. The fire district raised concerns that roadways proposed and noted a private driveway for multiple residents will have a greater traffic flow than single occupancy driveways. This will increase wear and tear on the roadway and will need to be maintained. In response, the applicant has set forth an access easement and severance that places maintenance and material responsibilities on the lot fundage subdivision with no mechanism for funding of needed maintenance costs. It is important to note that the county does not enforce covenant activities. Excuse me. Planning and zoning staff says the fire district's concerns and is also concerned about the control traffic impacts to existing residents along Third Street as all traffic generated from the subdivision would be loaded on Third Street thereby increasing maintenance costs for the county. Twenty-five foot radiusment dedication, the Second Street extension. The preliminary plan proposes to dedicate the existing twenty-five foot radiusment dedicated to the county for roadway along the property's northern boundary. The subdivision regulations define easement as an interest in land owned by another person consisting in the right to use or control the land or area above or below by a specific limited person or have accepted utilities to initiate a water access. The county has entered into an agreement with the county's water district that allows the installation of utilities in all county collect right of way and roadways. The county's water district used the preliminary plan application during the fourth process. There is some information contained in this middle documents and previous meetings with the property owner and its consultants. The district was abdicated that Second Street is already had already been dedicated. County staff confirmed in the applicant application to create that the road easement had not been previously dedicated by the county as indicated on the application following second twenty-one stage. The county's water district in finding out the road easement along the north property line exists stated they would support the community easement for future use for utilities specifically used by the county's water district. Second Street is a western joint fifty-foot right of way. Planning and zoning staff in terms of A I zoning of the surrounding property represents the opportunity for future growth and also indicates that the twenty-five foot radiusment dedicated to the county for roadway on on the mystery subdivision is planned to provide connectivity serving future development to the east as well as providing facilities for the agreement with the county's water district. The Department of Transportation does not support the location of Second Street. The fire district also raised the immediate safety concerns stemming from the limited ability to fight fires in the area due to L Street and Second Street not being completed to county standards. Nobody else provided to justify the consideration of the Second Street extension. Planning and zoning staff has continually noted that no private or disputed roadway are part of or unfired or undefunded roadway which exists by right of usage shall be located to exclude any unit that's joining that roadway without the status of public road or private access easement connecting seven one with another established public road. The location of the Second Street extension would eliminate the possibility of performance with the subdivision design standards that require all streets to be aligned uh to join the same streets. Due to lack of compliance with the subdivision design standards, staff does not support the location of twenty-five foot radiusment. Additionally, the location request is funded with a limited capability of county's water district to all maintain utilities. Limit connectivity to the physical zone in the area and present community safety issues related to fire protection. General dedication schools and projects. The subdivision property is located within the county's R C school district. The administration is recommending a statement that will hundred forty-four point eighty point eight zero on the mystery subdivision requirement in lieu of land dedicated to the school district. The subdivision property is located within the county's park and recreation district. It is the intent of Fremont County. The intent of Fremont County provides park facilities at a standard of twenty-five acres per one thousand occupants for residential areas. The proposed subdivision is thirty-three point six five acres and would generate approximately seventeen point five occupants based on the number of the office possessed. These are the subdivision base. Standard Appendix One B lot standard, second floor, front on Public Street. To exempt lots three and four from the requirements to front on Public Street, staff does not support the lot fundage waiver as the L Street as L Street as a potential as an access point to any of the lots as a criteria for driveway access permit or that the access is meant to an existing road right of way. They will have an easement agreement across the property. Additionally, the applicant has not provided any justification for the waiver request other than to avoid the cost of bringing up L Street becoming standard. No external external remedy, hardship, or practice of defenses will result from compliance with the design standards. Summary of the staff analysis and recommendation. Based upon the application, the criteria for approving, staff recommends the manual of the preliminary plan, twenty foot, twenty-five foot radiusment location request and a waiver from the subdivision design standard, Appendix One D, lot standard, second floor, front on Public Street, with three funding slots. Finding, based on the analysis, it did not support. Staff considers the proposal does not successfully address the criteria for approval. Number one, the proposal is not consistent with the transportation laws of the Fremont County master plan. Number two, the proposal is not in accordance with the subdivision design standards set forth in the subdivision legislation. Number three, the proposed subdivision design would navigate into active development of a continuous integrated network of county roads and presents community safety issues related to fire protection that are also limiting the planning for adequate utility provisions. Point mismatching. After the consideration of the property's information, may recommend approval. Approval of contingency or denial of the application to the board. If the planning commission decides to recommend approval of the preliminary plan and waiver request, staff staff recommends the following two. One, within three months of the final class recording, the life stats say that they'll be removed. Two, address the addition of water resources comment from the April seventh, twenty twenty-two comment letter prior to schedule of the preliminary plan application on the board of county officials' project review agenda. Three, the court raised that E T W I toward the irrigation pipe to catch the detail in the entry drawn addressing the fire district's concerns about the irrigation debt on the preliminary plan applicable. And finally, number four, staff will execute a motion of county's water district easement that was approved by the district board on February tenth, twenty twenty.
Good job.
Thank you for that.
Good afternoon. I am representing, I'd like you to give Mr. Horshin as so he is the owner of the property. He is the advocate of the advocates. He is also the developer. Just Mister Mystery. By yourself. He is not have investors. He is not out of all of those great. I want to make that very clear. Because there are many times in this staff report where they refer to costs and costs matter in one young show. Just doing this by yourself. I'd like to introduce to you right now Mister Alex Hewers, a real senior. And he is going to go into detail. Rocks look great, but that's not.
And it's more than three.
More than three rocks? And Mister Hewers is going to speak to utilities, roads, and the apple valley line.
We do have in front of us a two-page document, so if that if you need to refer to that.
Do you have do you have more?
Okay. Sure.
Thank you all for your patience to bring here. It's very good. I'm Alex Hures, Free Ross Engineering, and so much in your own product. So the slide you see right now has our utilities on. The subdivision will have electric, gas, telecom, vice versa. You see, it is very well to be serviced by, let's say, these water treatment systems. And actually, it's a lot. And a six-inch water line is being extended up Margarita Way, which is that cul-de-sac that you see going up the middle there, south and north. And a six-inch line is being brought up from L Street and Third Street. Just on the southwest corner, it's going down L Street and then up Margarita Way.
Down Third Street.
Down Third Street.
Third Street, okay.
Thank you. As mentioned in the staff report, there's a fire hydrant proposed at the intersection of L Street and Third Street. A second fire hydrant is proposed at the north end of the cul-de-sac, which is Margarita Way. That very fuzzy text is a piece of the easement that has been negotiated with the Rose Water District for Margarita Way. Margarita Way will be a private road, which I'm sure Dr. Bellatoni will discuss a little more later, but the bit of easement has been agreed upon with Water District in order to accommodate that proposed six-inch water line. Next slide. This is a snippet of a registered document showing the proposed road being brought up for Margarita Way. Margarita Way will be brought to or will be filled to county standards. County standards require a rural local road to be thirty-eight foot wide. Fun fact, the other roads surrounding the property currently maintained by the county are twenty-foot wide. So this will be much wider than the county requirements. Next slide. Then finally, Beaver Park Water has the irrigation line going from west to east on the property. It crosses the proposed Margarita Way here and then the cul-de-sac. That's really important to them that we reinforce it to make sure that it'll be able to not get crushed from any kind of logical movement across it such as fire. Fire trucks, I'm sorry, also weren't there. So this was discussed with Beaver Park Water and brought up this detail, which will be included.
Is that going to be a big hump at the?
No. That's just the crest of the hill, I mean crest of the hill, crest of the cul-de-sac.
So the the water line would run transfers or in line with that? Well, that's what I thought. Okay.
Okay. Next slide, please. So Mr. Hoshi Mystery is proposing four and a half acre lots. This is just to show that in fact that blends with the neighborhood. Lots in the area range from one and a third acres in the corner of Ellen Third Street to an eighty-acre parcel up north of Mr. Mystery's lot, which is Black Hill, which is eighty acres. There's five acre parcels, so these parcels, proposed parcels blend with the neighborhood. What I'd like to do next is share with you the evolution because as you noticed, or maybe you didn't notice, is our pre-application meeting was September nineteenth of twenty twenty-one. That's a year and eight months ago. So this has not been an easy process. It's not been a direct path process. So what I'd like to do is walk you through this evolution because where we landed today is not arbitrary. There were guidances. There were agency recommendations directing us to where we are today. So if you would disindulge me. So this is the cover sheet. I believe this is in their packet, the pre-application meeting letter dated September twenty-first. But what's important, we described on the left, Mr. Mystery was upfront gated community. We were told at the time to have a gated community. We must have a private road because the county wouldn't maintain it. So we said, okay. It's a private road and it's gated. Street improvements, if we read those three bullets right there, it says per county staff follow-up. So the county staff at the time followed up with Department of Transportation and they told us these three bullets, that L Street is a local road that is currently not maintained by the county. And it says, if the owner would like to have L Street maintained by the county, it would need to be brought up to county standards, but it would be at the decision of the developer. That's what we were told. Number bullet number two, we will propose at that meeting to go ahead and vacate that twenty-five-foot easement along the north side of the property because there was no use for it at the time. We were told to do that and it end the line and easement vacation is just a note on the final plat. We did that. Next, we were told that the Mystery Court at the time, that's what we called it, we've since changed it to Margarita Way, would be a private street of which the county would not maintain. And so that's what we were told at that time.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You were told by who?
Terry McCool.
One more time.
Ms. McCool.
Thank you.
I have a question on that first one that said that I can't read that from here. L Street would have to be improved?
No, she said we did. She she said it only had to improve it. And remember that this was also confirmed by the Fremont County Department of Transportation. It only had to be improved if we wanted it to be county maintained. It's currently not county maintained. So in order for it to be county maintained, it had to be brought up to standard. That's what we were told.
At your expense.
Correct. Correct. Okay. So if we proceed to the next slide, this is what we thought. This was November eleventh, twenty twenty-one, and you can see then it was Margarita Court went out to L Street. So when this happened, it was a gated community. Margarita Way was private. L Street was not necessarily going to be maintained. Only, I mean, only then Hoshi decided that. Margarita Way was private. And then lots four through seven accessed onto Margarita Way, as you can see there. And then let's go to the next slide. So as we're looking to this, so this is an aerial, kind of shows you where where Margarita Way would have landed. And Mr. Mystery said, where this goes now, now where we have laid out and proposed Margarita Way, we're going to knock out all those trees. There's an outcrop of standing trees. And inside that yellow oval right there, there is an outcrop of dead rock. So at that point, we went back to the drawing board.
I'm sorry, at that point, were you going to improve L Street?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet, okay. So then we go back to the drawing board. So the next slide. So this is kind of hard. And you know what? I used to have a laser, but I brought three laser pointers in here and I've lost three laser pointers. So one of you has my laser flare. So you can see L Street now runs, I don't know if you can, but it's a ninety-degree. It goes in from L Street fifty halfway across the north end of what is Mr. Mystery's front lot and then up. So now I have all this activity. Can you see that? So that's version two. Now what version two did is it preserved the trees and it bypassed the bedrock. But it required then at that time with the fire chiefs and three fire hydrants. At that time, now we were going to have to improve all of L Street and all of Second Street. So if you go to the next slide, you can see that now he's bypassed the trees, he's bypassed the outcrop. But the other thing that happened on this one that threw it out is that now Margarita Way is more than seven hundred and fifty feet long, which now that doesn't meet county standard. So we had to go back to the drawing board. But know that at this point, we had bigger problems in that, yes, we got to go back to the drawing board, but at this point, between the fire chief and what we were being told by the planner, now we had to improve all of L Street and we had to improve all of Second Street, which more than doubled, feel that, which wasn't going to work. So just to be clear, this is not arbitrary where we are today. Okay? So now we go to the next slide. Here we are today. Margarita Way is still private and gated. Those four lots on the north end access onto Margarita Way. There are two fire hydrants. Everybody accesses onto Third Street. We have an email that says that the fire chief is happy with this. I was told by staff that regarding L Street access for lots one and four, that one and four, that three and four.
Three and four.
One and four.
Three and four. I was told that to make sure that everybody besides the deed restriction worked off Margarita Way, that if I put a notation on the plat, that that would be fine, that there's no access on L. I did that. And then I got the notes that said I couldn't do that. Okay? So this is where we are today and we are before you today. And there's are some design challenges, but please stick with me. If we could please go to, we're going, I'm going to walk through the staff recommendations in the reading part. So if we go to the next slide, please. I want you to recall that it was Ms. McCool that told us to just make a vacation of the twenty-five-foot on the plat, which we did. So what I'm showing you here is that's the twenty-five-foot location, that's the location of the easement. Okay? Look at, look at what we have here. So first of all, we have Black Hills Energy to the north. That's where the transmission line is located. That's not likely going to be subdivided. That's Black Hills Energy. If you go further to the east, I have, you can't see it. This is the topo lot for the Fremont G I S and the circle to the left has fifty-five hundred foot elevation and circle head, it's heading down to Bieber Creek. So it's dropped a hundred foot elevation to go down there. So that's in twelve hundred and fifty feet, dropped a hundred feet. You can see that there's lots that have been developed that access on the Third Street and we have lots on the east that access out that road as you can see in the area. So all parcels have access. If we could go to the next slide, please. So the next thing we did is did some research on the easement, Second Street easement. Okay? So if we start on the east. So there's a stretch there has a twenty-five-foot, I'm going to say that's easement on a right-of-way, but there's no existing road. If you move east, that's what we're talking about ours now, which is the northwest subdivision. It has no right-of-way dedicated above the lots, just to the east of Mr. Hoshi, of Mr. Mystery. Then we have the subject nineteen ninety-seven. We're now the twenty-five, thank you. Thank you. I don't have a laser pointer. Okay. So now we have Mr. Mystery's subdivision. Okay, that has the twenty-five foot and it's not a right-of-way. Let's be clear, it's not a right-of-way. It's an easement. Now we have the segment between L and K, thank you, Diana. And that's the segment that is a dirt road equity. Then we move on to the west and this segment was actually vacated in nineteen ninety-six. Then if we move forward, go further on to the west, we have Second Street where it doesn't even exist and the landlord, she's the property. It was never there. And then if we move on to the west, there you have a subdivision and you can't connect to one fifteen. So there's one little piece. There is truly one block of Second Street that is even a dirt road. And it has been vacated or occupied to the west and to the point of development to the east. Those lots all have access. If we could go to the next slide. In response to Mr. Gasser's objection to vacation, he says that first he has an agreement with Fremont County to put his utilities in the roadway. We've asked for that. I don't have it. I haven't seen it. He says there's an agreement. I don't know. So if you go back to this plat, nineteen ninety-seven plat, it specifically says that on that plat, that easements will specifically tell you whose easement it is and what the use of that easement is. And in that twenty-five-foot easement, it specifically says that it's a roadway easement. And the utility easements are ten foot or five foot or whatever the typical is for the county for utility development. So no place on that nineteen ninety-seven plat does it say that that twenty-five-foot easement is a roadway and utility easement. It does not say that on the nineteen ninety-seven. It says it's a roadway easement. Next slide. So Mr. Gasser further says, Diana, can I use you again? The next slide is the Penrose Water District. Please show us where we are. So regarding the Penrose Water District utility expansion, there is the land to the north is outside the Penrose Water District. The lots proposed inside of the Mystery subdivision will have Penrose Water Service by way of the easement on Margarita Way. So there are no lots to the north that need water service from that easement. So to the comment made by Ms. McCool at the top of page eleven regarding the connectivity for future development, that's not even in the district. That's not in Penrose Water District for connectivity. That's not in Penrose Water District for connectivity. Now, that's just the easement.
So, may I ask a question there? The, so, we have L Street on the west, and that is, shows, if I'm reading this map correctly, two easements, each, one each of twenty-five feet. Okay? And the easement to the north shows one easement of twenty-five feet. Was there ever a second easement there?
Never, not on Black Hills, no. The property to the north is provided with twenty-five-foot, there's not any easement on it, no sign.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question while we're talking easements and the streets here? The property to the north is Black Hills, correct? And that's where they just ran the new transmission line through? Okay, and there's no other use up there for a road? Am I reading this right?
That is correct.
So we have, we have L Street. Now, on L Street, who uses that road now?
Nobody.
Is there any kind of utility use there?
There's utility easement in it, but are there utilities in it?
No, utility, there aren't.
No.
What you can say is it's not used by, I mean, for yours, I think that one.
Okay, because I'm seeing an air vent here, so I'm assuming there's some kind of a water line through there, or is that for irrigation?
That's the, that's the irrigation, distribution line.
Okay, all right, all right. And then my next question is on, on Second Street, now that's only just a block long, right? And it doesn't really go anywhere when it gets to that point, because it would have to feed the Black Hills property or something else to the north, and L Street does not extend any further north?
You are right, correct, correct.
So that intersection's pretty much dead then, right at that corner?
Exactly, nice word, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now, next, on page nine of the staff report, Ms. McCool requires that I rescind out utility notices. I want you to know that I have sent out utility notices for all three configurations, all three, every single time it changed. I sent out the utility notice, and you have the receipts in your packet dated September thirteenth of twenty twenty-two, which is the current configuration. So I don't understand why I have to submit, again, utility notices and pay for certified mail and do that all over again for the exact same configuration that was submitted to the county September thirteenth of twenty twenty-two. And that is all I'm gonna say on that staff report recommendation. Please may I move on to L Street and Second Street? If we go on to L Street and Second Street, first of all, just to be correct, on the very first page and the very first paragraph when the story was reading this, this is incorrect. We revised the application in twenty twenty-two to upgrade Margarita Way to county standards. Not recently, this is deceptive on that, we just changed our mind. Twenty, we did this a year ago, we chose to upgrade Margarita Way to county standards, just to be clear. So, we've already talked about the street improvements. We submitted this to the traffic engineer, Jeff Hodgson. Please bear in mind that all traffic goes to Third Street. Even L Street goes to Third Street. It doesn't matter if the traffic is on L or Third Street, or, or Margarita Way, it all ends up on Third Street. And if we go to Mr. Hodgson's roadway impact analysis comments, he increased it to sixty-six. He identified that the county has labeled Third Street as a collector, not local, collector, as a collector. And now that road is pretty much a dead end right there, right? It's kind of end of, end of the road right there, so it's a collector. And Mr. Hodgson said that the collector is sufficient to handle the sixty-six. Now, it doesn't, right now, again, I'm gonna say, it doesn't matter if the sixty-six comes off of Margarita Way or forty-four come off Margarita and twenty-two come off L Street, they all end up on Third Street. It's the same road. I, at this time, want to express that we take exception, especially Mr. Mystery, to Ms. McCool's statement on page five of her staff report that Mr. Mystery is doing this to avoid the costs and improvements of L Street. He isn't doing it because L Street, anything against the county, it's because, as I introduced him, Mr. Mystery is only Mr. Mystery. He doesn't have a partner, he's not a developer, so cost matters. And at the time of this second version one and version two, we were being required to improve L Street and Second Street. And that just wasn't within the finances of the county. Also, on page seven of Ms. McCool's report, in the second and last sentence of the paragraph where she talks about the result would be L Street remains in its current state, that's true, and when surrounding areas are developed, then the county would have to incur the costs. That doesn't make any sense, because it's the county policy, as is Hoshi doing right now. He's building a new private road, Margarita Way, he's doing that at his expense. So if there were other developments along L Street, whether it's the north end of L Street or the west side of L Street, then that developer would incur the cost of the improvement of L Street or Second Street. It would not be incurred by the county, which is what Ms. McCool states here. It says, then the county will incur the cost to bring it up to standards. So.
Somebody wanted to develop on the west side, they'd be responsible for L Street.
Exactly.
But if you drive, you're not, if you develop on the east side, you're not responsible.
Well, if I was accessing onto L Street, if version one or version two had worked.
What if one of the buyers wanted to access that instead of Margarita Way?
But it says on that plat, that you're about there, there's notation eight, and there's a deed restriction that says there is no access onto L Street. It says that.
So you can make a.
And we were told to do it that way, by the way.
But you commit, what if, would you not sell me a lot if I came and said I wanted to access L Street instead of Margarita Way?
You better say no. Just say no. And the last thing is that the fire chief accepted version three. He, he accepted the improvement on L, and there's an email to that effect in their packet, I forwarded to you, yes, I did. So, currently, there is no change to L and Second Street. They are not maintained currently because there's no traffic from this subdivision onto L or Second Street. Is that all I got on L Street? Okay. Next.
Oh, can I get some clarity on that? So, is a requirement via the county, as you understand it, to make the improvements on L Street if there's access on L Street? Or if the development just has any frontage on it, so? But per like a county code?
But that was L and Second Street that Chief Twitter talked about, which is part of what crashed eighty-two as well.
Understood.
And under the one.
Per county code, the upgrade to L Street is only required if there's access on L Street, is that correct?
I agree, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm trying, okay? Here's the next one. So now let's go to the width and depth standard. So Ms. McCool has said that the depth of a lot cannot be more than twice the width. All right, and she says it's typical of natural measures. So version one, keep in mind, was, was changed because of the, so, because of the, Margarita Way going through the trees and not clearing all that out. So this is Ms. McCool's, okay? What's, something I want you to really look at right here is, I'm gonna be Diana, is this line right here. See this, 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 and is it here? It's here, and then this is off. So, anything towards the cul-de-sac from that is an open area. So, when we're typically talking about a length and width criteria, they're typically rectangular, right? That's a normal lot, or close to a rectangle. And so, usually, the whole lot is buildable. You have setbacks, or you may have a feature, but pretty much the lot's buildable, okay? In this case, because it's a wedge-type lot, it's not, we don't have a buildable area to get to three hundred feet. So, Ms. McCool's measurements go from the vertex down in the, in the Margarita Way, and then she drew a straight line back, okay, for this distance. So that's, and that's okay. I would just like to get you to the next slide. I want you to think about this. If you look at what's buildable on these lots, that is from the three hundred-foot line back, then they conform. Except for Mr. Mystery's, which is the one he developed, isn't that interesting? But they all conform if you go from the, what's buildable from the three hundred-foot back. So, and what this also does with this really interesting subdivision is everything from the three hundred-foot setback towards the cul-de-sac is open space, natural vegetation. It's, it's a area of open space. You're preserving open space within this subdivision just by virtue of design. And then you have your irregular building envelopes placed out inside those larger wedge areas beyond the three hundred-foot area, which makes for a pretty unique subdivision, if you think about it, instead of just houses sitting in a row along, you know, a rectangular sort of subdivision. So there's, there's the thought on a wedge-type lot and may need a conformance. So it does conform if you do it from the three hundred-foot line, and of course, that's the buildable one. Lastly, almost lastly, I would like to talk about the repeated statement about access on both public right-of-way. This, the code is access onto a public right-of-way and/or a private easement through the private property. That's the code. And this is on Mr. Adamek's statement of October twelfth, twenty twenty-two. He has that at the top of the second page, he says, or an easement through the private property. I present you with easement access and items one, two, and three specifically lay out the easement that's being granted by the property owner. The other statement they make is that it's not being maintained. It also includes how it's gonna be maintained, how they're gonna share expenses, and how reimbursement's gonna be made, four, five, and six. So, Margarita Way is in fact a private easement, which meets the requirement of access of and or. So that means this doesn't have to go onto L Street, because we have a privately, and it's fifty feet wide, and it is of a better standard of construction than the surrounding areas.
Could I ask a potentially dumb question? Why does Margarita Way have to stay private? Why can it not just be a county cul-de-sac?
Because that's the goal, that was the goal of, I mean, that was from the outset, September nineteenth.
Sure, I understand it's a goal, but it seems like it clears up quite a lot.
What if we made it public?
So, I own this land that has been built by my wife and me for many, many years. That is the best-producing hay fields, and if they grow on the neighborhood in our sponsor, my hay should be that tall. So, and they made me put, and I'm saying they, they don't need to point fingers at anybody, to put Margarita Way off of Third Street and away from Second Street completely. If I'm gonna do that, why would I want that to be a public road? And have somebody go right off Margarita Way, right by my house, or other than that? I want privacy, I want my new owners to have privacy. That is the main objective of selling good real estate that is irrigated, pasture, and anything else. So why would we want to make it a public road that people just go up and down? I think if that, people come up and down just looking at my property. There's not fences out there, and you still want to kind of walk onto the property. I had people come up, I'd be thirty at night, maybe my daughter. And so I'm thinking that this is a better way to have the real estate go to the, the, yeah, the profession. For many, many years, I don't know what, I think we really want to buy.
Okay. And so I guess another question I have is, is there a possibility that this could be an HOA, so? An HOA?
Uh, we've talked about it, which is why, Mr. really doesn't wanna do with HOA, just because of the, the nature of the HOAs. And so that's why he's gone to the expense of having this as a recorded document and referenced on whatever final plat it is. He's got another document that he is putting together for the Beaver Park Water District Distribution of the Irrigation Waters, all of those things that normally are overseen by, did I go away again? I need you, I need you.
Can you expand a little bit on nature of the HOA, why that's a negative? Can you expand a little bit on why the nature of the HOA is a negative? You just said because of the nature of a HOA.
No, I don't want to live in nature, in HOA. It's all of the ones associated, the government vendors, because they want to be aware of some, you know, people. You want somebody that may have been kind of wrong, wanting to do it, wanting to be competent.
Yeah. But I mean, you're kind of are governing a little bit via the agreement already.
With his legal team, you're exactly correct.
Yeah.
With his legal team, he has prepared documents that are ready to be recorded, that would address the same issues. In addition, it's not a group of people telling other people what to do. It is an agreement that applies to every single lot in the subdivision equally. That's, that's the law.
And then you like, I don't know if I can say one more thing. If you're listening, if you find out how HOAs are really kind of not being fit by the state, if they're not, if you're not really the use you should be there. HOAs are kind of not being taken into part of little, minor little things about somebody who wanted to buy a lot in a major subdivision that you're not, that kind of, the state is they're really not doing this. You gotta kind of go back on your HOA agreements and regulations.
Sure.
Okay, we're gonna wrap this up, and they're having technology problems, so I'm gonna do this from my notes, and I apologize, I don't have a slide right here. So, when it comes up later. So I would like to take a quick moment to respond to the findings, the three findings that Ms. McCool wrote. And one of those findings, her first finding, was the proposal is not consistent with the transportation mode of Fremont County. It is providing safe roads, and that L Street is not being used, that Third Street can accommodate, it's a collector, it can accommodate sixty-six trips, makes it safe. So it is in compliance with master plan and their roads. And right now. And right now, L Street and Second Street are not impacted by the subdivision, and after the fact, they will not be impacted by this subdivision. As she talks about the one design standard of width and length, this was not arbitrary to get to where we are today. And the, this is a very manageable subdivision. It has open space built into it for everybody, to keep everybody apart, you know, give space between the development areas. And then lastly, the county road network remains unchanged. Her statement is the proposed design is negative impact, the development of continuous integrated network of roadways. It's not doing anything to impact the current network or roadway. L Street will stay L Street, Second Street will stay Second Street. The fire protection district, the chief signed out off on version three in an email. And we already talked about the utility provisions. Thank you, my respect, respecting my privacy. The utility provisions is that Penrose Water District ends to the north. This is the last parcel that they serve in their district. So they do have utility, they do have 10 feet of easement, or interiorly, they have 10, 5 feet of easement. That's how it usually works, right? The outside of the subdivision has 10 feet of easement for utility, and interior lot lines have 5 feet. Okay. And regarding the contingencies, should be decided to approve, we can easily leave those there very quickly. So, oh, well, looky there, can you go to the next one? 21. I think that we can't, is there something preventing us from going to the slideshow? To 21. So this is, there you go. So that's the easement, and you, I mean, you can't read that. But I, and that was just in March, that the chief says that he accepts.
Can't read it when it's full.
Slide bar.
Can I ask you a question real quick while you're talking about the chief? When, when he made the comment that he could not get a fire apparatus in on, I believe it was Second Street, because L Street was not improved, is that in reference to having a second point of access?
So earlier in the conference, that was, I guess, about a year ago, there are fires in that area, structural fires in that area, and there are difficulties accessing, when they actually got a structural fire.
And, and that's my, that's really the essence of my question, is where was that structure fire at? Because at the end of.
Second and K, it was not on Second, it was on Second and K Street. K Street was a big building, and the fire chief was lost. He did not want Coast Street to come into a something that was on Second and K.
Okay, I guess that, I guess that explains my confusion, because I'm thinking, well, there's nothing out there that's developed. We have, we have, we have a transmission line to the north.
So on this one email, the most recent one I got from Chief Twitter, he says, "This needs his concern." So he was good with version three, he was good with the improvements on Hebrew Park Water District's apple valley line, the improvements to make.
Okay, now, now I'm assuming that because you're closing this community off, you're going to have a gate on the.
On Coast Street.
On, on Third Street. Has he asked for any kind of access through that gate?
He has, he has. He has, all utilities, all emergency vehicles, yes.
So they'll have an access, they'll have a keypad they can open the gate with?
Yes.
Okay, all right. A Knox box, okay. Thank you.
Okay, last slide please. So the last slide is just, the subdivision in this agreement today is a gated community with a private code. Margarita Way is constructed to county standards, whether the roads in the area, access easement provides for the private access as well as the maintenance, the 25-foot easement along the north. We're still requesting a way with that. Penrose Water District doesn't serve it, they don't want traffic in here, so it's Third Street, fine. It doesn't matter if we go onto L Street or Margarita Way. All 66 of those traffics still go to Third Street. And I really don't think I need to send out another round of 22 notices. When nothing has changed, we've gone with configuration of this since September 13th of 2022, and I sent them the last time.
So there are some of us here that have been in this room for four hours now. What's the sense of the board? Would you like to take a short 10-minute recess? And then come back? Is that, is that objectionable to anybody? If we take a 10-minute recess and then resume? Hearing no objections, we're recessed for 10 minutes.
Presentation, is that correct? Of the, I do have a question perhaps to get us started here. What is the risk to the county if Margarita Way is not maintained?
So, minimal, besides all of the folks that would be owners of that roadway coming in to voice their concerns of why we allowed it to be a roadway that gave them the maintenance. So besides, there's no real risk to us. It will be the homeowners and their displeasure with our decision.
And their signs. Thank you.
Can I follow up with that?
Sure.
So would each individual homeowner have to sign that contract for?
Yes.
Okay, and is that transferable on the property?
It stays, it stays with the property.
So subsequent property owner that buys from a field-
Has to take it, yep.
Has to take it? Would they be aware of it though?
Well, it's going to be mentioned in the deed.
Yeah.
It's going to list that contract, I should say.
Yeah.
And then it has the building restrictions as well, so it's just a document. Yes.
Can I ask you a quick question? In one of your versions, maybe I'm confused watching the different versions fly up there, but did you agree at one time to do improvements on L Street?
At one time, we agreed to do L Street from the intersection of L Street down.
From Second Street down?
No, no, from the intersection of Margarita Way to L Street and then down to Third.
Oh, you were going to bring Margarita Way in from the, from the west?
From the west.
Okay.
Version one, at one time we did. Yes, we did. And then we were told that wasn't good enough.
Okay. Do you have any, any idea what the cost would be to do improvement on L Street up to Second Street?
All of L Street?
I mean, that would just be, that would just be a gravel road, right?
To county standards, but, yeah.
Pardon?
To county standards.
Yeah, to county standards, but, but still gravel.
It would not. Yeah, no, I, they, you could do a county maintained gravel road.
I'm sorry.
You could do a county maintained gravel road.
So, version one, initial cost estimate, engineers' opinion of the problem of the cost. For the project without, without L Street, Second Street, it's going to be $424,000. To go, so there's just a short stretch of L Street north where Margarita Way was intersecting, that we're saying we weren't improving. To add that short section, we only estimated it'd be $12,000. Then when Second Street came along and they said, we got to improve all of Second Street, we estimated that that would have been, you know, somewhere around another $60,000.
Wait a minute, they're, they're asking you to do Second Street to the west?
Correct.
How far to the west?
All the way, all the way to the east.
To the west or the east?
L Street wasn't really an issue, it was really Second Street.
And I, I hear your eyebrows.
Well, I, what I'm trying to, what, here's, here's my, here's my, here's my dilemma. I would love to see you put this subdivision in, and it looks to me like it would be doable. Here, here's what I'm seeing. I'm seeing that, that L Street needs to be improved to keep the county department of transportation happy and to keep the fire chief happy. Because I know what he's looking for. He's looking for a second point of access to Second Street. So his engine, his apparatus can come in from either direction, but that's all going to be to the west.
No, the Second Street isn't, isn't built to standard, correct? No, Second Street is not built to standard. So when you're saying the fire chief-
So they're asking you, they're asking, okay, now, now I'm really confused because L Street, you could, you could do that to, to standards and Second Street still wouldn't be improved.
That's-
Okay, well, what I was going to propose is maybe if you could do the improvement on L Street and do everything else you proposed, we could meet everybody, make everybody happy.
Yeah, because it worked, yeah.
Because Second Street still doesn't meet county standards.
You're there, you're there.
Okay. Well, thank you.
And further question on the cost of, so that was over 400,000 to improve to county standards for a gravel road?
No, that cost was total cost, estimated cost for the subdivision utilities and everything. So what I was really getting at is for Second Street, we estimated it'd be an additional $60,000.
Second Street alone, and you didn't have a separate estimation for L Street?
It'd be about the same, is it about the same?
Sixty and sixty. Sixty thousand dollars, give it its due. Yeah, now how is-
Yeah, and the thing is too, is if we had told originally when version one had to do that, we didn't have to do Second Street, we just had to do L Street. I mean, that's the way we're at. But unfortunately, we were told, oh, not only do you have to do L Street, now you also have to do Second Street. That's one of the issues.
And Second Street from L Street to the west.
So now, the way that we responded to that with the current configuration, now it definitely makes sense to do L Street. It was going to be astronomical to just do L Street and move it along with version one.
Did that stage ever use, would it ever function?
No, it makes sense.
Did it just plod it?
We would like it, yes. The county commissioners.
They would never plod it, they would never do that?
Mr. Hoshi, because he lives out there, he might want to go.
Yeah, I mean, so they haven't declared?
Well, I mean, they're, they're not even to standard, they're not maintained.
Okay, well, what are we, are we talking like two-track or?
Uh, no, it's a dirt road.
It's a dirt road.
Do people use it now?
When we cross that line even.
So it's never, it's never, never been used?
If you do have a particular storm, they're like, not so many of them are, but this county uses that for the lines. So you're going to have to do more, uh, to do this, this, that's-
On the map is a usable traffic, yeah.
It's always been told to me when I've been studying the state is, if you want a street that has not been taken over by the county, you have to figure out the county specifications. And then the county takes over, they're mission. Nobody wants to do that. Because these streets are on the south side of Highway 15, north side of Highway 15, like 29 streets that you would not want to go down, not even possible.
Does the fire chief, did you say that there was a letter that he says that we, that street, Second Street could be vacated or? Because he, he referred to the area to the west, where was it, on K or something? Do they ever use that to fight the fire or is that, or, we don't know?
We don't know.
But what's his, what's his stance right now?
He, he sent a, I sent you that. He sent an email.
We don't have anything in writing though.
Yes, we do, we have an email from him.
That says what?
He, he accepted version three.
Which is what?
That was what you presented on your slideshow.
I did, I presented this slideshow.
It's not in our packet.
Two fire riders.
It should be.
I thought I saw it in our packet.
Yeah, it, it, it's, the, the packet's quite extensive.
Yeah, tell me about it. For a week, what, in a week were supposed to go over everything?
Uh, well, there, there was some difficulties with that. We had a conversation and initially, we weren't sure if this was going to be presented. So that, we didn't start assembling a staff report and then the applicant requested we present it. So tried doing, trying to accommodate them without pushing off another month is what caused a week's delay on you guys getting it. Um, so there was, there were some decisions being made on their end, which, so we didn't start preparing the packet until very last minute. And-
Maybe it should have been put off for another month.
I, I don't disagree with you, sir.
The staff report wasn't presented to us until the eleventh hour of the month. So we, we didn't, yeah, so.
Yeah, so the, the PC packet was, we were scrambling last minute while the applicant was making.
Well, I, I can guarantee you this too. Would have this been taken care of in Fremont County as opposed to shipped out to Denver, so much of this never would have happened. So much of this never would have happened.
So the, I think one thing worth discussing would be like the pie-shaped lots. We did have a discussion on that and the way our regulations read versus what our standard practices. Our, the way our regulations read is within the front setback, it must meet that 300-foot width. In reality, how the department, the, our, our practices are, will allow it to not meet that 300-foot width within that setback line and it becomes an unbuildable zone. So we, for, for the applicant's sake, we did, we did talk to the consultant, say our, our department practices are different. So that isn't necessarily part of the problem on the, meeting the right width within the 50-foot setback. With that being said, I, I don't, it probably would not be the department's interpretation that the, the length starts at the, the buildable area. That, that probably isn't something that necessarily could be supported.
Because the intent is to just not have these long skinny lots, right?
Yes, yeah, that is absolutely the intent. So to establish that they're conforming based off of where the building line starts, that, that wouldn't be something I'd be favorable of.
Other comments or questions or? It looks like this is, this has been in front of staff for, for quite a while and it, it appears to me that the parties have been, I'm trying to find common ground to, to work out the, the desire to develop this piece of property. And I do appreciate the efforts of, of all concerned because this is, it looks like it's not been an easy process. Looks like there's been some bumps in the road. Other comments by?
Yeah, well, sorry, I know I'm being chatty, but, so you said it was, that the frontage definition in the county code was road or easement, correct? And, and you agree with that?
That's for Tony, yeah.
For which one? Is it?
It, it, you must access onto a public right-of-way, duh-duh.
Maintained.
Private easement.
Yes.
So then the trickiness becomes the maintained, right?
Which is called out in items four, five, and six of that, the sort of two access easements, plus that specifically.
Yeah, how it's going to be maintained. So I guess the way I kind of read that is, any, any one of the homeowners could pay someone or do the maintenance and all the other homeowners would have to chip in for that?
There's a documentation process, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like they all have to agree to it though, right? I mean, I guess a concern, I don't even know if it's really in our purview or not, is somebody could say, well, I think it needs maintained and I'm going to hire this person to do it at this price without asking anybody else, but they're all, all on the hook to help pay for it. Is that a correct assumption?
It, it could create conflict.
Yeah, I can see where there'd be a conflict. Another question would be, you know, you have public utilities in that road, you have a main break. Suddenly the road gets blown up. Who's on the hook to fix the road? You know?
Long answer is, you gave to us that if they didn't want a company to open, that they won't bring it back to a usable state. And we spoke with a lot of the media, and they're finding that, he said, it's the same situation that he has with the county and county roads.
Okay, but does he have an actual agreement with the county versus having an agreement or what do you say they'll do because?
He expressed that, no, we were just basically doing the same thing that we do with the county.
Yeah.
And that's actually written into the easily created, um, form of the railway, so he said it's written up.
It is written that, that any, any utility fixes, they'll bring, they'll bring the road back up to standard?
Yes, and I think there was some back and forth on what exactly that wording was and we basically settled off, they'll bring it back to a usable state.
Usable state.
That's the, like, the same way that they offer it to the county.
Okay, is there a technical definition for usable state?
I don't know.
Yeah.
You can say something about, I don't know, just the first, you want to play the road, the Kentucky grass, is that Kentucky grass or something? Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm excited to go, I'm not going to play Kentucky grass, whatever, whatever the grass, Kentucky grass.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not going to play that, I don't want to do that.
Yeah. I just, I'm dealing with old, old handshake agreements that, you know, the people that had those handshake agreements are gone and other people have filled those and don't have the same views. So I guess I'm seeing where, you know, actual agreements kind of hold a little bit more weight for what utilities will do.
It is written in the case.
Okay, to usable state, yeah.
And a lot of it, mainly as a piece of communication that came down to, they're finding that, oh, what they need is that, if they have to go to the easement and somebody decides to put a bunch of Kentucky bluegrass in there between the edge of the road and, you know, the edge of the easement, they're not going to replace it with that, you know? They have to, they have to come in and do it right away.
Yeah.
In reality, we want to talk about it more, we realize that 26, well, the edge of the road and the easement, so to do it, they're, they're just, they have 38 feet to work with, that, why not?
Have, have we, have you ever seen this style of shared maintained road?
Um, I haven't, but the attorney chose, they all have put it together last year. This was her solution, that she does, this is her expertise, this is what she does. She's on my end of easement, attorney.
And does-
She, she knows the easement.
Does the county DOT or, or you have an opinion on whether this would meet that maintained section of, of that code?
That'd probably be a better one for Tony, dynamic. I think if we're having this much discussion about bringing it back to a usable state, it might be easier to reword it to county standards since that's what it's being built to.
Yeah.
And then that would satisfy-
Yeah, it's defined, it's a-
It, it is defined in that way, it's very clear for everyone.
Yeah.
My thought on this is similar to what you had brought up. If somebody decides they're going to do maintenance and send all their neighbors a bill without approval, that absolutely can cause conflict. Again, it's, it's not a county conflict, but it'll result at our door since we approved it.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, that's what may happen in the future.
So you're suggesting, I get to ask, may I have that, that's a question, Jim?
Sure.
Um, so you're suggesting then, what you're telling me is that you don't like the specific, you don't like the specific agreements that we have that are acting instead of HOA. What I'm hearing is that you want an HOA where they come together and they make a decision collectively or not, and then take action collectively or not. That is what I'm, you're saying, go that path.
That's now I'm saying. I'm saying, is that an option? I'm not telling you what to do. I'm saying, is that a viable option?
What I hear is you're putting, you're putting that back because you're seeing it as an opportunity to discuss.
Yeah, I guess I'm fleshing out, you know, whether that, that's going to meet the county standards, the code, which is, you know, our purview is, is to say, does this meet county code? And so I guess I'm fleshing it out, asking questions as I see fit. I'm not, I'm not trying to tell you that you need to have an HOA, I'm not trying to tell you one thing or another.
I know that this, all these agreements were presented, you passed to the county, reviewed by whoever from the county that found legitimate rules and dialogue happened back before. So that, that, that happened, not with county passion.
Sure, but it didn't happen with me present, so I was not, I was not privy to all the things that have happened previously, so it's kind of our job to make sure that it did happen.
I just, I want you to think that we just said, this is it, this, this was a back and forth, you're on this one, and that's how we update, we're looking at it.
If you do that, there's not much of a problem with snow, you know, there's some big snowstorms, he's going to find it.
Snow and move on. If they have to work it out, I mean, they're buying a gated community, with the understanding that you're in a gated community and you have to work it out, that's, that's the understanding. And so the, 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 good, finally, you've got to work it out, and that's what that access and services does. It sets that up, there's a non-life, you don't like it, that's, I mean, it's, yeah, but nothing wrong with it, you know, do this. We're doing the same thing for a dead dog.
Are, are you aware of any other gated communities in the county?
Um, all of the gated communities I'm aware of are typically have an HOA to, for road maintenance and for handling all the issues inside of the gates.
Yeah, and I'm, again, I'm not suggesting there should be a requirement, I'm just asking.
That, that's my only knowledge of them. I don't know of any private gated communities.
I guess Mike can say, was anybody moving in expecting the county to come in there, oh, snowstorms.
Just real quick, if you live at the end of a county road that is not maintained, serves just me, one other law, it's almost a similar situation. You know, we got no complaint with the county or anything like that, you know, never we can get a big snowstorm, it's pretty rare, I would take it out, it's pretty much, you know, do that. I'm sorry, I know you all can get huge snow, snowstorms sometimes, but it's pretty rare. So just living on a, they have the same situation, we personally have, have issues. It is probably, you know, we don't have a good one.
Okay. Uh, one, one quick question. Have you had any objections from any of these surrounding property owners at all?
I have not, I have not received any objections to that.
So you, you haven't had any, anybody objecting in the neighborhood to what you're proposing to do?
As a matter of fact, I have no objection to the, to the, to the, no, no, this, I do.
Has staff received any objections?
There's no objections to my knowledge.
Okay. Were you about to question out? I'll make a motion if I can muddle my way through it. Jesus, please. Regarding the mystery subdivision, what's the number on it?
Twenty-two dash oh-oh-one.
MS twenty-three double oh-two, no, excuse me, PP twenty-two double oh-one. I'd make a motion that we would accept this subdivision filing number two with regard to the request preliminary plan approval, number one, vacate the 25-foot easement, waive the subdivision street design standards. And we were of development of Margarita Way to county, county standards. I'd, I'd move that we approve it.
What was the third one, I'm sorry?
The third one is.
Bring mystery up to county standards? Okay, and you're okay with that?
No, we are.
Okay, all right, that's good, thanks.
Okay.
I don't hear what you're willing. And I'm sorry, I missed it, did you?
Basically, I'm just moving it to we approve it the way they submitted it.
Yeah, and then there's the contingencies, you know, that were addressed out, livestock shade, the one through four contingencies.
Except the re-alification of utilities, please.
Incorporate that, properly execute, I don't think it was one of the four. One was-
So, so, excuse me, but the, the, we, we have a motion, and if we're going to amend it, we have to vote on amendment to the motion, to the motion.
Okay.
So, uh, so right now we have a motion to vacate the 25-foot road easement, number two, and the nature of the request, waiver from the subdivision divine, design standards. And waiver of development of Margarita Way to county standards. That was your motion, is that correct?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
The Margarita Way is to county, so there's a waiver.
Right, I think we were adding that the plat language though, instead of built to, or, sorry, when it gets-
Well, they're, yeah, they're bringing that to county standards, that is the waiver.
Okay, understood. Sorry, I just wanted clarity.
Okay, I have a motion, is, is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, is there, is there further discussion?
Uh, yeah, so there was the staff recommended contingencies, one being within three months of final plat recordation, the livestock shade, shade structure shall be removed. Number two is address the division of water resources comment from the April seventh, 2022 comment letter prior to scheduling the preliminary, preliminary plan application on the board of county commissioners' public meeting agenda. Number three, incorporate the BPWI board-approved irrigation pipe protection detail. Number four, properly execute and record the Penrose Water District easement that was approved. Number four, properly execute and record the Penrose Water District easement that was approved by the district board on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Those were staff recommended, those were the entirety, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I would, I would make a motion to also include those contingencies.
Amend the motion to include those contingencies? And those contingencies, livestock shade structure shall be removed, address a division of water resources comment from their letter, incorporate the ditch board approved irrigation pipe protection detail, and properly execute and record the Penrose Water District easement. Those are all acceptable.
Okay.
Then, so we have, we have, we have a motion, we have a motion to amend, and you.
And then can I ask just one more question?
Well, wait, wait till discussion, okay. So we have, we have a motion to amend, and is there a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion to amend, and now discussion.
Yeah, sorry, okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate your guidance. Um, I, I know your opinion on the utility, sending the utilities out back for referral, but I don't, I don't think we've gotten the, the counties, so when this went out for utility referral, second round, this was, but this iteration had already gone out for the third round, okay? And this is the exact carbon copy of that? And we received all the comments from those utilities?
Yeah, we would have received all of the comments from the utilities.
Okay, so no changes, carbon copy?
If there's any changes, it would have been noted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion, and this is on the motion to amend. And so I'll call for a vote? Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Aye.
And so we're back to the original motion now, as amended, which is to approve with the request as recorded on our agenda. Uh, any further discussion on that? Uh, I'll call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. The, and is there any further business to be brought before us, then we are adjourned.